Thank you.
Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where it just stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the show, all members are present. This is a public comment policy statement. If there is anyone from the public that wants to make a comment to the board, they will need to go over to the table there and read the script and then fill out the form to make a public comment. At the end, we will reserve about thirty minutes for public comments. But you will only get three minutes to speak on your topic. The board will not respond unless the chair allows it. Okay. Any questions with that? Hearing none? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, I mean.
I will, I will do that. And we are removing three B off the agenda.
Correct.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, who's the welcome aboard people?
That's me this morning.
That's you, well good.
Yeah, good morning, I'm pleased to announce that we have hired Akeem Banister to serve
Hey, Akeem.
as our preparedness coordinator for public health. Uh, we're really excited to bring him back to our team. He served as an on-call animal control officer for nearly seven years for the county. But he brings a wealth of knowledge for preparedness planning from another health department in the Salvation Army in the past. So, we're really excited to have him.
Perfect, good deal, good deal.
Welcome, Akeem.
Welcome.
Welcoming.
So, he'll be boxing over there or be on the road?
A little bit both.
A little bit both?
He'll help our department primarily, but he'll also help the other counties in our coalition for the Southwest Iowa Preparedness Coalition.
Okay. Is that, is that a grant position then?
It is a grant position.
Okay. Well, great. You, you live in Pot County then?
Omaha.
Omaha, okay, that's, that's close enough. Okay, well, we are here on Tuesday mornings. If you ever get bored and want to come and see something. But if you need something, don't hesitate to reach out to us. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Now get back to work.
Thanks for, uh, ran together. Congratulations.
Yes.
Thanks so much.
I didn't put my stickers.
That was it, Matt, Maria, you're out too? Cool.
Okay, Marilyn Kennedy, collections manager, auditor's office.
About Jody.
Marilyn Kennedy today, so Jody.
Oh. Yeah. That's okay. Jody, Jody, do it. Jody, do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Marilyn Faye today then?
Here's the recall for Pot County for the Mo Valley Weekend. Election last Tuesday. We had twenty-eight people vote here in Potawatomi County. Five percent turnout. Uh, of Mo Valley. Twenty-eight people.
Where, where did, did they vote in Crescent or where did they vote?
They vote, it's part of Rockford Township. And that's in Crescent, and then it's Boomer Township, which is part of Neola.
Oh, so they vote in Neola?
Neola, but we just opened one precinct.
Oh, you did?
In Crescent.
In Crescent.
Yeah, so they had twenty-two vote there, we had six vote here.
Here.
There was a total, Mo Valley had two hundred and eighteen votes, so they had a seven percent turnout.
Did they approve it?
Yes. It did pass.
Was that a PEPAL deal?
Yes, it was a PEPAL and a revenue purpose statement.
I will make the motion to canvass the Missouri Valley School District and to authorize the auditor to pay the election cost.
Second? Good. Deal? Any discussion?
Matt, see that bowl to turn out?
Whipman, were you the second?
Yes, yes, he was. This is just a straight vote. Um, any discussion or hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. What was the cost for those twenty-eight votes?
Right now, it's about thirty-five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five hundred dollars for twenty-eight votes? Wow.
He's going to dump the school?
Um.
The Crescent School?
Yes.
Not the school anymore?
No, it's all the, the house and school.
It's kind of academic.
And sports club.
Yeah, there's a long name for it. Okay, thank you, Jody.
For handling that.
Beginning elections for a while. Okay, Becky Linnahan, Finance and Tax Officer, Auditor's Office. Discussion and/or decision on setting a public hearing on the Potawatomi County proposed property tax levy for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six and to approve publication request.
Our proposed property tax levy letter that's going to go out. This is the publication that has to go into the papers. We will hold that on April first at ten a.m. And it does have to be a separate meeting other than your regular meeting. What are your thoughts on folding this at eight o'clock in the morning? Since it needs to be a separate meeting so that the public has an opportunity to swing by on their way to work instead of taking time out of their day?
Too late to do it this year because the letters, the times have already been sent so that they could get the red letters prepared.
But we haven't approved it.
Um, I don't know, I guess I just put it the same time as, as what we had last year.
Okay, ten o'clock works.
This is the letter that's going to go out to the property owner, right?
Inviting them to a public.
Do we have a copy of it?
What?
Of that letter? We ready for that? Does it have the levies on it?
Yeah, it has the levies on it.
Pardon me?
It has the levies that you from last year and then the ones that you approved for this year.
I'm giving them a copy.
We talked about them, but we haven't approved anything. The, in the study session, we knew what we were going to put in our max levies that needed to go out. You can still adjust them down, but the letters have to go out.
We discussed levies last week in our studies.
We did in a, we did in a study session, but we didn't make a motion setting those levies at all. Do we, do we need to do that first? I mean, the general fund levy was like three fifty-one and.
Mm-hmm, and that one you can't go.
Okay, but, but, but the, um, general basic was went down twenty cents, I can't even remember what the levy was.
Three eighteen.
Three eighteen, okay. And then the debt levy went down seventeen cents, what's that?
Eighteen cents.
Pardon me, that's all we talked about was how much these were going to go down. We didn't approve any levies, any levy rates. Shouldn't we do that before we send a letter? Think you will approve those after the public hearing, after you get the confidence we're going to approve the levies. Because this is just the proposed levy rate.
It, it would have been nice to have it in the packet so that we could compare to last year and.
Hold the letter?
Yeah.
For the levy rates? I can get those to you as soon as we get done here.
Is, is, is this time sensitive today?
Yes.
Pardon me?
We got to stick to the timeline.
Well, I'd like to make sure we're sticking to the levy too.
Right, right, but with the, we built for publications and.
I mean.
Did we vote after the?
No, we did not.
We did.
We did not set the levies.
Schedule another meeting for Thursday?
I won't be here.
Won't be going.
Well, I.
Yeah, we'll be in DuPont.
Okay.
We do it tomorrow at eleven? Will that throw us off in our time?
Letters already are printed, they're gone.
Already gone to the printer. We have a very, uh, tight timeline and I think you were given the calendar. Um, my mistake if I didn't get it. Make it clear that we had to have this done in order to get it to the to the, uh, printer.
So, what's our way tomorrow morning?
I don't know if you have to make vote and motion to approve the proposed. That's what I guess I'm saying. You would still have to vote to have the.
Tax levy, it says right there.
Yeah, to actually set it, that would be, would come after the public comment, the hearing of where you actually set it at. That would be your motion and your actual vote on.
Then that will be the lock.
Yes.
At that point.
Right.
Yeah, you can see, you can lower this.
Otherwise, there's no point in having a hearing.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's true.
Well, we should have set the proposed rates too.
I'm like.
There's, we, we don't have record of anything.
Okay, so you want the public hearing for the first day of April?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-five at ten a.m.?
Correct.
That's the motion.
Sure.
And my thought next year is to possibly have it in the evening.
That'd be good.
Makes more sense for people.
Okay.
Can we have multiple ones?
You do have two public hearings.
One in the morning, one at night?
Don't we have another one then after April first? Final?
This is the proposed property tax levy, April first. And then you will have another one to approve your budget.
Public hearing.
Budget, it's on.
Yeah, that's what's.
I don't know, I would think you could probably continue a public hearing if you wanted to have one at night. We haven't had much success with that, but whatever the board chooses to do. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Hearing, uh, hearing none, motion passes. Hearing one. Becky Linnahan, Finance Tax Officer, Auditor's Office, Discussion and Decision to Approve and Authorize Board to Sign Resolution thirteen dash oh twenty-five and Title Resolution Four. Transfer of sixteen thirty bond series twenty twenty-one A Capital Fund to twenty thirty bond series twenty twenty-one A Debt Fund.
This is the balance that's in the sixteen thirty, uh, capital fund. Uh, all the projects have been completed. So we will transfer this money into the debt fund to help pay for the arbitration, um, costs which are three thousand nine ninety-six thirty-two that must be paid by April twenty-ninth.
The arbitrage is not arbitration.
When you pose this arbitrage rebate, rebate, and I'll put that on the board before it's paid. Before we pay it.
We close it to the one thousand or zero dollars.
Right, in further.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Call.
Chairman Bill?
Right.
Supervisor Wickman?
Right.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Shay?
Aye.
Supervisor Ferguson? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Okay, discussion and/or decision on voluntary annexation of the southern Potawatomi County adjacent to one hundred ninety-second Street and to prove and sign resolution twelve dash twenty twenty-five entitled a resolution in support of the proposed annexation of four hundred seventy-three acres. Uh, give or take, uh, land legally described as being part of sections twenty-nine dash seventy-four dash forty-three and thirty-two dash seventy-four dash forty-three, Potawatomi County, Iowa. Parts of sections five dash seventy-three dash forty-three and six dash seventy-three and forty-three, Mills County, Iowa, as shown in Exhibits A and B and presented to the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa utilizing the eighty-twenty voluntary annexation, including land without the consent of landowners in, in, in a non-urbanized area.
So I attended the public hearing over at the library and the common concern, of course, was traffic at that intersection. And I know the city and the county and Mills County were all interested in those issues.
Which intersection we talking about? All of them?
Bungie, Bungie Avenue primarily.
Well, you know, when it, uh, Harry Langdon and, uh, north, south, east, west, Omaha Bridge Road is a concern too.
Yeah.
Yes. And after the public hearing and the board, we submitted a letter to the City of Council Bluffs and I was, I haven't heard the outcome of that. Did the boundaries change because of our request?
No, they have not.
And is there a reason?
Um, we're moving forward with the same boundaries because of the voluntary piece of it. The projects that are included are considered voluntary and our goal is to always square our boundaries. So the properties that were included in the twenty percent additional, um, if we were to change that, we would be taking parts of properties for owners versus entire sections. So, no, we've, we've continued with the same boundaries.
And you're annexing half of the road?
We're annexing to center line by state statute.
State statute?
Mm-hmm, that's, that's how it works, is we take to center line.
Of, of an easement?
So the easement would be separate, that's not part of the annexation, that's something that.
Easement is a road. The road is an easement.
You mean the ride, you're talking about the ride?
It is an easement.
Right, so we're, we're taking to center line.
Half of the easement.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we, we're going to vacate our easement, so we'll see how half of your road works.
Are you, are you doing a traffic study down here with all the development?
It's one of our proposals.
The developers will be required to provide a traffic study as part of our process through the, through projects in general. So that will be part of the.
Access to that study?
What's that?
Yes. The board will have access to that study?
It, it's a public, well, I, I'm not sure, I, I should say it that way. But it will be reviewed by your engineers, our engineers. Um, I, I would say the projects themselves are in Mills County right now, so that will happen through our engineering offices and, um, I'm not sure how much the Pot County engineer will be involved, but I know that they're meeting, the three engineers are meeting to have that discussion and talk about some of the.
You have issues down here, heavy truck traffic going into that area. As, as it becomes more developed, more issues will have all around, you know, not, not, not just one road.
Sure, I understand.
Leading into that area. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's getting, it's getting to the point it needs to be addressed in some ways.
Yeah, I would say just understand that the projects themselves are separate from the annexation.
Right, right, right.
So just if you think about it as a two-step process, this is the first step is the annexation.
Could I go back to the road?
Yes.
Okay. You're annexing that. If that road gets paved, does it not have to be set up to city standards?
If the, yeah, if the project warrants that kind of work, we try to do that to city standards. I know that one hundred ninety-second is pretty narrow and it's not anymore, okay, I apologize. The, the part that, I'm thinking about the gravel parts of it. Um, so again, that'll be something our engineers work out with what we think is feasible based on what's available to us.
Would the city then pave that whole thing or would we be required to pave the other half?
I.
That's a concern of ours.
And I don't have an answer to that. Um, I think that that's part of the overall discussion about what the, what the city's contribution can be and what the county's contribution can be to move any improvements forward that we've seen for a long time that need to happen. But just becoming part of the city limits doesn't make it so that we can afford to do some of those things is how I would phrase that.
Um, why didn't you, why didn't you take the whole road? Is there a reason for that?
We took to center line, yes.
Why didn't you take the whole road?
That's part of the requ, that's part of the annexation piece, that we don't, we take to center line as part, part of the statute, so, yeah.
There's no, who does that, city or county?
What'll happen, this is, I, it's a common thing that happens along our borders. Um, our engineers work out, um, Franklin is a good example.
This one, Miles.
Yeah, they swap things out, we'll say, hey, I'll take this one if you take this one, and we work it out, um, on the backside. Yes, they do, yeah.
And our engineer was instrumental in providing his input for the letter that the Board of Supervisors submitted to the city. And I, I guess I'm just disappointed that our recommendations weren't included.
Understand.
So at this point, we get to decide whether we support the annexation or we don't support the annexation.
Well, you know, we can, uh, write our own resolution and, uh, come up with, uh, what parts that we support, which we like to, uh, be good partners and what parts that we aren't known for.
Sure.
Rather than this resolution that's in front of us.
Your timeline real critical at this point.
Um, you would have one more week to respond.
I support the annexation. And it's my understanding, once that, uh, is, is done, it goes to the state for review.
That's right.
The state will then review the comments made by this board in Mills County and determine the actual area of annexation. Whether that area it gets changed or doesn't, my understanding, is that correct?
Um, I'm, I think it's a yes or a no. Um, I don't think that they have the authority to change the boundaries that we provided, but I don't know the answer to that supervisor.
It's never have.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Well, it's economic development and, um, I think it's, uh, it's a project the city's been working on. I think it's a benefit to all of us. We can work out the road issue. I'll move, I'll make a motion to move it.
I'll second that.
Objections that we would have, is that going to be public or publicly noted?
Correct, all of your, your letters will be included in the planning commission packet, they'll go to city council, um, it becomes part of the public record.
You don't think we can?
No. Like they're going to say this, then back out. Write our own resolution. Yes.
The next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Very soon, I say.
By, by writing your own resolution, the only thing that would change would be your opinion or our, our, our opinion, our opinion of whether, um, the boundaries are correct.
Maybe.
Well.
We haven't discussed that, we haven't discussed it as a board yet.
Well, we're doing it right now.
No, we're not, you are.
Having this conversation.
Right.
It's, uh.
But the resolution hasn't been written yet.
We, we have one right in front of us.
That's right, but I'm not.
I still have, I still have a motion on the floor to approve.
Yeah.
You pulled out, Brian?
Yes, I did.
I'll second.
Thanks, Susan. Um, this is, uh, this is a, um, a project that probably, I shouldn't talk about the project, this is an annexation that, um, betters, betters all of us. If you look at the possible project that could come, uh, I think it's a benefit. We can hash out the, um, the boundaries for the, uh, construction of a road when that time comes. Um, that might be five years down the road. It may never happen. So.
What do you think about the road, the cost for the road to the county? Hey, really do.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, Scott, I'll call for the vote.
Uh, we got, anybody else? Discussion? Okay. Smoke?
Chairman Bill?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Supervisor Shay?
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Ferguson?
Aye.
So we'll have another resolution next week. Fair.
Thanks, Courtney.
Thank you.
Some things should have been discussed before the resolution.
Is there anything that the city can provide to you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Unless you got a bunch of extra money over there.
I do not. All right.
Thank you. Christine Bracker, Attorney, Discussion and/or Decision to Approve and Authorize Board Resolution Number twenty twenty-five entitled Resolution Authorizing Amendment of Forgivable Loan Agreement with Regional Water. Did Tom not come?
He was, he was here last week.
I had some more questions for him.
He was going to come, right?
Yes.
So.
So, what I was directed to you last week was, uh, basically amend the agreement that we already have to extend the payback period after June thirtieth.
Okay.
So that's what I did, that's what's in front of you today. I don't know where Tom is.
The only thing I would, um, request, and I'm not opposed to this whatsoever, to be honest with you. I just think on our behalf and for Mitch, um, we need a copy of the invoices of the materials that were bought for this because I think we used ARPA money for this. And if they come back, they want, want to verify that it was, uh, whatever American made, I want to be able prove that with the invoices that he can supply with us.
So I don't have anything about the invoices in here, but.
Well, I know.
I amended to.
Scott, I have, I have a majority of those already. So I can get those over to you.
Don't know, so you're.
I had enough to make sure to cover what we did just for our product, that amount has been covered.
Okay.
With the invoices already.
Okay.
It's part of my documentation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Question? This is a great project. Seems like it took a little longer than was anticipated, but with what's, uh, going on, I think, uh, any, any and all types of housing that we can get, uh, going in Pot County in the region is going to be a plus. That we can get uh, going in Park County in the region is gonna be a plus for all of us. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Bell?
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen?
Aye.
Supervisor Shea?
Aye.
Supervisor Wickman?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Okay, Janor Limerick, Director, Human Resource, Jim Garbina? So I got that right?
Hard being that yet.
Yep, uh, F C, F N I C group. Uh, discussion and decision on fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six employment health insurance.
Morning.
Good morning. Wow, fancy folders.
We already knew you'd done all the work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not today. I did bring my computer under. The screen isn't working entirely, so um. We, we decided to, oh.
It's working now. So Kim, did she, she just didn't get that done?
We, we do have uh, all the renewals for the county employees programs, employee benefit program for July first. Uh, some discussion in here on uh, the different programs, but the medical program uh. Included with the I G H C P uh, through Wellmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Iowa. Had some good news on their part. There was no increase in the premiums for the coming year. Uh, I G H C P has a consultant group that requested a, a small increase to their fees. Uh, that was approved by I G H C P uh, members in total. So that increased at about a point two seven percent adjustment. I then was visiting uh, with Jana and the H R team about. The partial self-fund. So the county buys a larger deductible from Blue Cross and then they self-fund. Uh, the out-of-pocket for the employees. Over the last couple of years, uh, county has continued to. Consume more of those dollars than they've put into the, the program. So we requested a, a review of that and we'll uh, walk you through some history. Back in the attachment section of the plan, but if I can. Have you go to uh, section one of the book, you will see there at the top is the. Current rates that the county pays to Blue Cross, their consultant, I G H C P. Uh, E B S does the work for you on the partial self-fund administration. So the total annual cost today is about ten million dollars, just shy of ten million dollars. Uh, going forward without any adjustments to the partial self-fund, you'll see the. Ten million oh one four, so about fourteen thousand uh, dollars there. Point two seven percent year over year. And as you see at the bottom line there, that keeps a partial self-fund at about one point three million. Without any adjustments proposed.
That's where it is now?
The one point three million funding is where it is today.
That doesn't mean we have one point three in the bank, though. Was that your question?
Yeah.
Right. I think Brian's question was, do we have one point three sitting in our account? Yeah, and Jim will get to that. Yeah.
If we move to exhibit A's. Exhibit A in the back.
Got it.
And you, if you go to the second page in that section. You're gonna see at the top, it says Potawatomi County Partial Self-Funding Risk Review. Page seventeen is the number at the bottom. There we, we in that bottom box, we took a look at. What the spend has been in terms of reimbursing employees' claims uh, over the last five years. And you can see that average is coming out at one, one point six million. And we've been contributing, you know, one point three million in the last couple of years. The, the following page is a little bit of a graphic description of what's gone on. Over the last forty years, so. This one would include the account balance and what that has done in blue. So if we go back to twenty twenty-one, there was an account balance of eight hundred and twenty thousand at the end of the year. You can see the claims were one point seven million. The funding. Uh, was one point two million roughly. By the end of twenty-two, the account balance had dropped to two hundred and ninety-one thousand. Claims were running at the same pace, one point seven million. Funding was one point two. The end of twenty-three, uh, similar result, uh, funding. The county put in a lump sum in twenty-three of six hundred thousand dollars. To assist with the utilization. The year to date through January of this year, so July through January. That account balance had dropped again to three hundred and seventy-six thousand. Claims were nine hundred thousand, funding at seven hundred and eighty thousand. So with the five-year history running at one point six, we had made. Uh, a recommendation that the county consider making some additional. Premium payments to the P S F account to address that utilization. Uh, I understand there was a county discussion a week ago uh, or so. And I didn't have a chance to look that up, I apologize, but open for discussion on the P S F funding. We uh, believe the discussion had included about a two hundred thousand dollar increase to the funding. Which takes the renewal to a plus two percent uh. For the year. As a comparison, I would tell you, that's great news. Uh. The market has continued to run high on the pharmacy claims. High on medical claims. Overall average is around eight percent is what the market is seeing as increases out there. The county has had some unusual claims in the last three or four years, last year being. The highest loss ratio at a hundred and twenty-six percent. To Blue Cross. So the, the claims that were paid on your behalf. Outstrip the premiums uh, by twenty-six percent. That part of your program is pooled under the I G H C P. So there was no penalty or additional cost uh, surcharge to the county. But definitely the weight on the I G H C P program has been growing. Over the last three years, uh, that loss ratio continues to run high. It is, to be honest with you, we are seeing loss ratios run higher due to large claim expense. Large pharmacy expense. I think the county was very fortunate that I G H C P ran very well as a whole and didn't require any additional. Funding uh, for this year. So that was great news on behalf of I G H C P. Uh, and the Wellmark premiums, but I will emphasize that Potawatomi County is. A very heavy user of, of those benefits under that plan. But let me pause there for a second, take any questions that you might have on.
You'd like to see that partial self-funding around one to one point two?
Well, the funding we would like to see move up to one point six million and you're at one point three million change today.
Do you think we fund for one point three million now that we have one point three million in there right now?
Correct.
So, so again, kind of similar to your question, we're not sitting with one point three million in that ba- in the bank right now. We funded it and we're spending it. As quickly as we're putting it in there.
Yeah, so there's three hundred and seventy-six thousand. We think at one point six million. Your fund balance will hold at that level. Uh, but. You won't be really adding anything into that balance at the one point six million level.
Do you have any numbers for the first half of this year?
Yeah, that's the twenty twenty-four, so July.
Already at nine hundred and seventeen.
What do you mean, calendar year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well.
Yeah, so are you, are you asking for January and February data?
Well, January is in here.
Okay.
We don't have February yet, but yes, expenses. July through January claims were nine hundred and seventeen thousand.
Then if you just double that, they're gonna come in at one point eight. I mean, that's probably not fair, but.
Correct, because they do, right around the end of the calendar year is when deductibles and things reach, so your P S F. Funding generally runs higher in the fall months of the year and then drops off a little bit more in the spring. So we're predicting you'll probably be in that one-six level by the end of the year.
But what do we propose? Our balance will be at the end of the year?
Uh, if we do nothing, we'll probably be down around two hundred thousand.
Inter partial self-fund.
Correct.
You, you guys hold on to that then?
E B S does hold that.
E B S holds it.
Yes.
Can they send us a monthly statement?
Yes.
For the, now, who gets that? You?
Jana gets that.
Jana gets that. Can she start sharing that with us?
I can sure ask her.
Where's she at?
I think she puts the money in there, so when she makes the premium payments, um, I think she's.
It's all inclusive.
Yeah, it's all inclusive, so I don't know exactly how she sends them a payment. When I say send a check, it might not really be send a check, right? But she sends them the money, they put it into the account. I, either monthly or per pay period, because that's how we um, you know, uh, do those.
See it?
I do, yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Do you want Jim to send it to you?
Yeah, Jim can send it to them.
Okay.
Yeah, if you'll give me the direction, we'll just make, make that count. Yes, we can.
Violation there.
No, there's no private information there. It just would show you the funding and expenses. And the balance.
Yeah. Done.
Well, we, I really, decent renewal, right? We'll just have to um. Support our partial self-funding, which we've already talked about.
Do you want to share those details with Jim? Because you discussed it in a study session, is that right?
Well, we, yeah, we discussed it. We haven't voted on anything. I think the board talked about uh, six hundred thousand. But, yeah, I think where we're going.
Yeah, I think the plan was six hundred thousand before this fiscal year ends.
Oh.
Two hundred thousand planned next fiscal year.
Okay, in.
After July first, so.
Okay, so we would build the two hundred thousand into the monthly premiums or even would you be?
Would it be one lump sum?
Yeah, lump sum.
So we would keep the premiums, in essence, the flat, but the contribution was, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Similar, kind of similar to what we did in twenty twenty-two, I think it was. Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll keep the premiums the same.
Probably six, the six hundred in uh, April or May.
Right.
And then uh, the other in Florida.
Okay. One other, oh.
And we, I mean, we need to. Depending on where we actually finish up this year. We'll need to have a serious discussion of, of um, more revenue under that fund, so we don't have to make. Two with three, six hundred thousand dollar. Posits into the partial self-fund is there, should be covered in itself, which means if we're six hundred thousand short. We're three hundred thousand short of where we're at.
Correct.
That's a nickel on the levy, so. It's something that we have to need to talk about for next year.
Yeah. One other request we had from the county was to do a self-insure analysis. Uh, so we, we did hire an actuary to prepare that. We. Brought a summary, which is in that same section uh, in the attachments at the bag. You'll see the title page says fully insured versus self-insured analysis.
At an exhibit A?
Uh, yes.
This is the page you're looking for.
Yeah.
In the very top box on uh, the number page four. You'll see the three-year loss ratios. Uh, and this would be your premiums to Blue Cross, um. Your total claims then coming through, so your Blue Cross loss ratio reflected there. So it's been jumping uh, to the current year of a hundred and twenty-six percent. The, the three-year, we also pulled out a, a couple slices of it to show you. What's going on with high-cost claimants. So they, they're representing a significant amount of that total claims. You'll see. Uh, the year then, number of members, so it could be an employee, spouse, or child. That had claims over ten thousand. And that's changed over the three years from eighty-six to a hundred and seventy-two, so double. Then we took a slice at fifty thousand. Claims above fifty thousand are considered catastrophic in the industry, and that number's gone from eighteen to forty-one. The, the dollar amounts uh, of those claims above the ten thousand. You can see is uh, medical pharmacy. And total claims of about eight and a half million in twenty-four out of the ten and a half million. So well over eighty percent of the claims were uh, borne by a hundred and seventy-two people out of your total. That is a troubling number, but again, we're seeing that happen in the industry as we get these. Catastrophic pharmacy dollar uh, claims as well as medical care. Early as we age, so the, the county is seeing some aging going on within their population. That's as part of it, uh, but general utilization. Across the uh, members of the plan are also up. So we're fighting higher cost and more use at the same time.
So you're saying that's happened industry-wide, this eighty percent?
It has, yes. Um, yours is, is higher.
Let alone that I will be in the number one cancer state.
Right, right. Um, so tho- those are some things driving. We, we. Dive into your claims quite a bit, but the question is, you know, the expenses under fully insured. You really have the same type of expenses as a self-insured plan. But you don't get the benefit of the I G H C P pool. So this would be a scenario where. If the county pulls out of I G H C P and chooses to self-insure their plans, which. Larger employers of your size do, um, the outcome of that without a change to your claims. On the next page, you can see the. on the next page, you can see the bottom line would be about two million dollars more in annual cost to the county than what you're contributing today. So it would not make any sense at all, but to give you an idea, IG HCP has thrown around for years whether or not they do some tiered renewals. So the groups having higher loss ratios would pay a higher premium. At that time, it would be natural for you to say, well, are we better off in IG HCP or are we better off on our own? Today, and it looks like, at least for the next year or two, likely that answer is you're much better off under IG HCP's pool, fully insured, no additional risk, and you're, you're saving about two million dollars in expense.
From the largest group.
Yes.
That's in the IG HCP with, uh, specific.
That's correct.
What do you see about prescription cost going down? Are we hopeful that we get some arms?
Honestly, we don't see any, uh, anything coming out of Congress this year. Uh, we're hopeful we'll see some pressure, there's definitely pressure on the pharmaceutical companies to manage these catastrophic pharmacy drugs in a better way. But there's a proxim, every year we've had roughly over a thousand new drugs hit the market that are in excess of a hundred thousand dollars a year. So they're expensive, many of them are in the million dollars now, so it's not unusual to see a large claimant that has a million dollar pharmacy claim. They'll look normal to you and I, but that pharmacy, uh, prescription keeps them working, keeps them, you know, functioning, but at a cost that's a million dollars a person.
As they go bankrupt.
Yeah, right. So, you know, we do have employers that have taken some pretty tough measures under a self insured plan to restrict access to some of those drugs. Um, so they're excluding some of those high cost drugs from their health plan. Members then have to go to the marketplace, you know, for coverage. So there's, there's tough waves ahead of things that our government needs to manage. But pharmacy is one aging population and, and, you know, the healthcare means we, we use to keep people alive is so extraordinarily high that employers are finding, you know, they're approaching a, a breaking point where they can only cover so much of an increase. And employees are gonna be asked to burden more. You still have very, uh, a, a great quality plan. So it's, uh, great for the members of the plan, we don't have drug restrictions today. The IG HCP pool has been healthy, looks like it will continue to be healthy. Your wellness pursuits will only help your outcomes and, and prepare you for the future. So we're working with Jana and Heather on looking at some alternatives to the current wellness that might be more productive for your program.
Was it, uh, I don't know if they keep you informed, they're, they were, they hired another individual, but they were adding on, was it three more groups this cycle? Then they had another, seven more they were considering. They don't take on, they don't take on any schools except for the ones that are currently there.
Right.
But there are some other, uh, communities that were considering becoming part of the pool. So any of that is beneficial to all of us, the way this is set up.
Growth, growth helps if it's healthy.
Right.
Um, you know, we're hoping that IG HCP is doing significant amount of underwriting to make sure that they're a healthy add to the group.
But the demographics of the state are what they are.
Yes, right.
You know.
That's right.
And they, they have a pretty good handle on public employees.
Correct.
Cause that's what they're doing, the sector they're dealing with.
That's correct.
So.
Yeah.
I would assume they're doing their homework and picking their winners and losers, hate to say it that way, but.
Right, I mean.
It's the, that's the business, you're in.
The business, yeah, you wanna be in a, as healthy a pool as you can, because that controls your cost and it allows you to, you know, subsidize the employees out of pocket, which is the reality of the premium savings that you're getting is helping you with those dollars on the other side. So your, your employees are truly benefiting from that and their families, uh. But that obviously will be, discussions we'll have down the road as to how their consumption is affecting your own expenses as well as playing it.
I, I really have issues with pharmaceutical companies. Just curious. How has COVID vaccines, uh, affected the whole industry? I mean, are you, are you seeing things happen that shouldn't be happening after you got vaccinated with COVID, that kind of thing?
That, it's a tough question to answer, but I would tell you the industry and physicians are concerned about some of the, the issues, there's been some health issues that are unexplainable. Uh, we know that some of the physician groups are studying whether they're related to vaccines, but there has been nothing that I have seen that proves that out today. But certainly, they, they saw a number of, um, stroke-like symptoms, brain bleeds, things that were a little bit unexplainable. Um, again, nobody's been able to say it was directly related to a vaccine or not, but they were unique enough that it's caused some of the cardiology groups to be studying that.
You know, I, I, once in a while, I, I go and get examination, I might, seems like every spring I get an upper respiratory infection. So I get antibiotics. And, uh, not always the same attendant sees me. And so they ask me, what, what are you taking for medicine? I said, I'm seventy years old, what are you taking for medications? I said, well, I'm, I'm taking a blood thinner because I have a factor five blood type that prevents the cell to blood clotting, so they recommended me some years ago. Taking medication for that. But they're amazed that that's the only medication, I'm seventy years old, that that's the only medication I'm taking. So I think about that, and I said, okay, well, people go get an examination, whatever. And then, then, then those, those patients, uh, just automatically take what's recommended that they take for any kind of problem that they have as far as medication goes. And so you think about, uh, the medical industry today pushing pharmaceuticals, I mean, I, you're, you're looking at all of that, I imagine.
Yes, we are.
It'd be hard for me to, to explain why I would have to take a pill that costs a thousand dollars. And yet there, there's.
Yeah, there's genetic health issues, you know, virtually in all categories that are that seriously expensive. But, you know, there's drugs for rheumatoid arthritis that are by a thousand a month. There's prescriptions for hemophilia, which is a bleeding disease, it's one point two million dollars a year. Uh, we had a, a genetic bone disease, mother and daughter, both on the same drug, one point eight million each, and that's a lifetime drug. So, um, what's that? No, it wasn't.
Not Pot County.
Not Pot County, but we're seeing those kind of claims out there that are popping up and that are, you know, virtually under anybody's measure and affordable, um, to a plan or to an employer. But they have these diseases, again, the drugs are life-saving. In some cases, uh, allows them to continue to work. Really, the question gets down to at what point is it affordable to have those drugs? You know, I think there's a lot of, a lot of discussions that will be born out of that discussion, yes. Any other questions on the medical comments?
Oh, I know I've asked Jeanette this in the past, or Jana, sorry, Jana in the past. Um, employee plus one pricing, I, I just would like to continue to look at that.
Yeah, so, um, it's, it's common to have four tier rates, uh, some do three tier rates, some do two tier rates. What typically happens with that is, you know, if the total dollars brought in by singles and families is a hundred dollars and you decide I wanna discount employee plus one, family goes up a little bit to bring in that same hundred dollars. There's ways to do that, um, that makes sense, but certainly the main question that you run into is from a competition standpoint for employees and fairness to employees plus one or a spouse, an employee's spouse versus a whole family. Is there cost sharing, uh, should it be the same? And we're happy to do the studies, but I think that as a group, you'd have to say, here's, here's what we wanna look like publicly. And just by going to employee plus one, you're, you don't save cost really cause most of your cost is just paying claims. So that's why it just shifts like that to the family rate. Uh, so there's a, a factor that we could start with and look at how many of those you have and what would be the, the cost to do that. You know, the, the county has a choice then to say, we'll raise the cost share of the families to cover that reduction to the employee plus ones, or the county says, you know, we'll keep them where they are. We'll have to eat a little bit more to give an employee plus one a discount off the family rate. Is, just kind of open discussion on how that works.
That'd be somewhat potentially subject to change and share with the board.
Yeah, can be.
That, that would be a difficult discussion, because if you have one employee, could be, um, the cause of your claims being so high.
That's correct, one person.
Right. So then if you have an employee plus one, a parent and a child, you give them a break and you stick it on the, on the, uh.
The family.
Yeah, I mean, with two kids, how, how, how does that work? How, how would that be fair?
Well, you, you, you're, today what you're doing is you're putting all those dollars and claims in one pool and then you're assigning it based on roughly a count, a single person versus a family count, um.
I'm just saying, those are some of the things that come to my mind right off the bat, that there is no fairness issue with that.
Right, right, and it is a tough discussion with employees. But employers started moving that way years ago to do a couple things. One, encourage families to make sure they're looking at maybe their spouses working and they, they're really not considering going on their employer's plan, uh, because you have family and so there's no benefit for them shopping their coverage. So it, it does create.
What triggered a lot of that was companies, some public companies were buying, paying you to go.
Yes.
To your other insurance, and if you want six thousand dollars, go get on your husband or your wife's insurance, or you want ten thousand dollars, whatever that was. I don't hear that going on a lot anymore, but that, that happened.
You're right, and we have other public entities that are doing studies today saying, should we give incentives to people to leave our plan? Uh, because it's less expensive than the cost of claims.
Yeah.
And so that, that still goes on, but you're right, it's, it took on its own life for a while and then it's quieted down.
Yeah.
But that's one of the reasons the four tier rates, at least, what I say is it gives employees the ability to look at that. If they have an employer that's, uh, similarly generous, where you, you know, they cover a high amount of single, you may have opportunities where, uh, headcount reduction is cost reduction, but that's, that's also a strategy that we would take from the, the county board and your HR group to say, how do we compete better in the market? It seems as though today hiring has been pretty strong for you and I'm not sure it's the same concern that other employers have.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
So the heat of motion is second to approve the renewal of the county employment health insurance for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six with.
Second.
With my shade, with my jorgensen. Um, is this supposed to say with the FNIC group and, and, um, H, H, HGICP group, is that what, how's that supposed to?
For the motion?
Yeah, it says with.
I mean, looking, um, can we look and see how we did it last year?
I would have thought it would've been filled in, but.
I think we probably put it on the agenda how it was on the agenda last year, but what was the motion last year is what I was. Like not from the agenda, but from the minutes.
What, uh, or does your, does your contract come under a separate motion?
Oh, there's this diff, there, the contract with FNIC is something different.
This would be with IG HCP.
And EBS.
I, G, C, H, P, and E, C, S. Do you guys agree with that as your?
Yes.
So, so that includes going with MetLife for dental, that's just included in the packet?
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we just talked about medical, we still need to talk about dental and vision, correct?
The best care is regular.
Right. Sorry, was that right?
The next one.
No, no, that's.
No, that's something different.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So we need to approve the MetLife or whichever ones, okay, what's your recommendation there?
Yeah, we're recommending we renew with MetLife, uh, there was a cap of seven percent. Uh, again, your, your members tend to run dental the same way they do on medical, so their claims experience was high, uh, it called for a higher increase, but we had negotiated a cap of seven percent. Um, and so that takes the premiums from three hundred and eighty five thousand to four hundred and twelve. The county shares these costs with employees as well. Um, it would come in conjunction with the vision. We are making a recommendation to move the vision from reliance standard to MetLife, which reduces the premiums on the vision, which the employees pay for that, but it would help the employees absorb their portion of the dental renewal. So it would soften their, their blow there.
I don't see a page in our books for the MetLife vision.
Yeah, oh, that is, in the vision quotes are back in exhibits, uh.
See.
See.
Thank you.
Real, real quick, I, I don't have any issues with, with your recommendation there. Question I have is, how many employees do we have, Jana?
How many employees do we have, or how many employees do we have on the insurance?
Well, we have four hundred and seventy four on the insurance.
Or medical insurance or dental?
Or on, on dental, I mean.
Right, on the dental.
So then we have four hundred and seventy four employees?
Well, no, we have more employees, um, I mean, we're pushing closer to five hundred employees. Um, and dental, the county pays for employees to have a dental, a single dental plan, whether they elect it or not. So that's why your dental number is so high. So if, if I come in, I'm a new hire and I presented my benefits, um, and I don't elect any health benefits, the county gives me a dental plan anyway that the county pays for. The county has done that well before I've been here, and I think, and Jim and I have talked about this multiple times, about that. We think that the reason was because to get a better dental rate, we need to also have numbers. We need to have people that take the dental, so we've offered that to employees. we need to also have numbers, we need to have people that take the dental, so we've offered that to employees. So I could have a family dental plan on my husband's insurance, but the county still pays for me to have a single plan. That's why your dental numbers is almost the same as the exact number of how many employees we have.
Might be a good discussion.
Sure, sure.
That's, that can be a good thing, is being the front line to any health problems you have.
I mean, dental care, yeah, is very important.
You're right, dental health is critically important and they do catch cancer and a lot of other conditions uh that way as well, so that's a benefit to your health, I guess. Um, the MetLife vision uses the same network uh as Reliance VSP, so the provider list is the same. Then, just to run through the other things that are provided there, the Potomac County provides employees a life insurance benefit, there was no changes to the rates or the benefits. Same with your long-term disability, uh, same with the voluntary life that the employees buy. So overall, really, the dental increase was the only one uh that's, you're faced with, with some cost adjustment because of the uh medical, but.
Those, those changes start July first.
That's correct.
So will MetLife be sending us all new cards?
Well, for vision?
I don't know.
Well, dental, we're not, we're staying with MetLife, we had a three-year um contract, contract with them, but we still sent it out for market to see, so we're in our third year with MetLife um, with a cap of seven percent, which we knew, but we sent it off to see would there be anything different. So no new cards for um dental. Vision, they rarely send cards anyway, you usually just give your social security number to the eye provider, and as Jim said, it's the same providers because it's still VSP.
Still got.
So it's like MetLife, but with VSP.
Quit sending cards.
I'm not saying that they're going to quit sending cards, I'm saying vision cards usually, I've never gone to a vision provider and they said, hand me a card. They just say, what's your social security number, let me look it up real fast. We can look into it if, to change, but I think so for the voting today, dental was already on a three-year. So I don't believe that you need to vote, but vision, we're changing providers, even though it's still going to be VSP.
Right.
But, so I think you would need a vote on that.
So we need to change it to IG HCP and EBS and MetLife for I.
Um, IG HCP does not do these benefits.
We're not.
Oh, you don't have a separate buying motion?
Well, I, I think.
We don't have a motion for them. It's not on the agenda.
Well, the agenda is to review benefits, to re- to review and approve our benefits.
Health insurance.
Right, dental and vision are part of county health insurance. I think it should be separate motions though, one for health insurance, because that's a different provider, and then one through vision, which is a different provider. It's just clear in the minutes in the future, if we forget in five years, what we did. But the agenda is talking, saying health insurance.
Right.
You don't, you don't think that you can make two different motions? I mean, I'm just asking.
Why wouldn't, why, why wouldn't it be put on the agenda that way?
Because he- health benefits are.
There.
Health.
I, I would have been there.
Then, well.
Separate motions on the agenda.
Well, as far as a topic, health benefits to me is medical, dental and vision.
So why can't I do it in one motion?
I mean, you, however you see fit, I was just simply making a suggestion so that it's very, very clear. Exactly, how, however you want to do it.
I think the motion's plenty clear.
Okay.
Next time you put her on two agenda.
I, I can sure do that if you'd like me to.
So, Scott, you want a motion for uh?
IG HCP, which I have, and I have an EBS one, now I need MetLife for I. And then, and Brian made the motion and Jeff seconded it, if they would concur with what I just.
I concur.
What's that?
I concur.
And you seconded, or?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing then, motion passes.
Thank you, guys, I, I know it's always a lot of discussion, but I appreciate your review and, and thoughts.
Yeah, and Mitch pointed all that money.
Really?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Off you can.
Yeah, if you can get that thing sent to us, EBS, local leading, that'd be great.
We'll get that started.
Good, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Hey, old Mike, we still love him.
I will do that, yeah.
Is he in the south of France or?
Uh, I don't know, but, you know, some days it's tough to know where Mike is, but he's good.
He's like Sam Wambier.
Yeah.
He's there.
More warm, warm is where he's at.
Oh, he's back.
Yeah, he just got, got back from his own.
Okay, Becky Lynn and Finance and Tax Officer Auditor's Office, discussion and decision to allow slash disallow the following applications made to the assessor's office. Homestead, approximately two hundred and sixty recommended allowed, zero recommended disallowed, military, twelve recommended allowed, zero recommended disallowed, disabled veterans, homestead seventeen recommended, two recommended disallowed, family farm eleven recommended allowed, zero recommended disallowed.
Sixty's out today, she put on the agenda. Um, we have two that are recommended disallowed for the disabled veteran homestead. One is um due to a letter does not state permanent and total disabled. And the other one is seventies percent disabled and not unaffiliated.
Don't move.
Okay.
First and second, any discussion? Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Hearing then, motion passes.
Thanks, Becky.
Okay, Mitch K, finance, Chief Financial Officer, discussion indoor decision to authorize the chair to sign the forgiveness portion of the small town forgiveness note for warrants.
You got all of the documents?
Yep, they're all there, they, it's between the two projects that you guys had have kind of approved for them to do that they brought to you, they spent a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so it was over the hundred and twenty-five thousand they were.
So we'll give them. Second.
Is that, is this letter that's in our packet the one that you're going to send, Mitch?
So the very first letter in the packet that has the county um letterhead on it.
Yep.
Just need permission for Scott to sign that.
What's the, what's the, what's the twelve thousand five hundred doing in there?
If they didn't, if they didn't spend their money before that October day, I think Avoca had an exception that we'd approved previously. If you don't give this letter to the county within three years, your responsibility to pay back twelve thousand five hundred a year for ten years. So that's what it's actually forgiving, the county portion of it.
All right.
So we got a first and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, like sign. Hearing then, motion passes. Discussion, indoor decision on compensation and condemnation commission. I don't know that I got my responsibility to take care of that yet.
We talked to two people.
I think our ag land owner is already taken care of. So did that not get put on here?
No, it's on here.
Where is it?
Second one.
But Dean's got to go then, right? Or do we still need to fill Dean?
I've lost track. I just knew. There were three assignments and you had yours done before the meeting. And if Scott hasn't done his, then we're still short.
I'm, I've talked to somebody and I didn't follow through, I was out of town.
Needs to go back on the agenda next week.
Okay.
Okay.
Two more.
Yeah.
Okay. Find a realtor. You need to find a what?
Homeowner.
A homeowner? Well, you want to trade?
No.
Okay.
I don't know how those real.
So do we want to prove that what's there now?
So, save, let's wait until it's all right and then prove, publish it once.
Yeah, I don't know that we have to publish it, do we?
Yes.
Really? I think we just got to give it to the courts, but whatever. Okay, so we're going to table this, Mary Ann, until next week, so I'll put it back on the agenda. Okay, update from board members on committee meetings for the past week. Holy prime. Jeff, you wanted to start us off?
Uh, let me see, I was at the Veterans Administration meeting. Uh, something came, uh, uh, at least I, I found out about it yesterday, I didn't know situation. And that they were looking to acquire, it's not approved. So I, I'm going to say that I'm trying to find a way to take a sick look at that and the board members, the VA can discuss their, their ideas. So that's where I'm at, uh, but, but that's a later.
In DC early last week, on the board, and Les Hills Alliance got canceled because of the snow and had a trails meeting.
Yeah, sorry, do you have anything?
Nope.
I have nothing to report. I've got a question though, for the assessor's public meeting on March eighteenth. Uh, who's planning to attend? We need to have two there.
Yeah, I gotta be.
Right.
I could be there.
Want to make sure we had two, thank you two.
And you ain't got to come to, you stay that late.
Circle back.
Yeah, that's a long drive.
Got to recover from St. Patty's Day.
Oh.
Done.
Okay, so I had um NACO, uh, which is the National Association of Counties. Uh, we met out in DC. And uh, everything's subject to change at this point, so stay tuned. Uh, went up and to the Iowa Racing Gaming Commission meeting, all of our casinos came out with flying stars and got their licenses uh renewed, which was good. Uh, sounds like the, they're all doing real well with the competition across the river. So more to come next month on some big announcements on some of the casinos here in town. And uh, attended uh, the state champ, um, girls, St. Albert's basketball team, congratulations to them and their success and all the other teams in Pot County that were in the state in one of their sports, so. Cool, uh, we were pretty well represented, even though our governor sat behind the losing team twice. Probably did real well. Uh, motion to go in and close.
Nope.
Don't public comment, I'm sorry, anybody from the public?
Did you sign up?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
In some time.
Okay.
Okay.
How do you want me to do this?
Well, I can get you the.
What did Jeff?
Thank you. Oh, we're going, I'm, now, the, the, now is the time, the public comment, we will now discontinue the live broadcast from the advice of our county attorney.